If you can hear me, it's a sound check. Can you hear us? Mayor, I move that we come out of executive session.
I have a motion to second, come out of executive session, all in favor, signed by by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. The ayes have it, and we are out of executive session. Do I have another motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move to adjourn.
I have a motion to adjourn, all in favor, signed by by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. The ayes have it, we are adjourned. Mr. Clerk, do you need to stop or change anything, or are we ready to roll on the next one?
Mr. Mayor, we're ready.
Okay. Council will call the meeting to order for the record. It is October 19, 2021, at 6:02 PM. We will begin tonight's regular city council meeting with roll call attendance.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Councilman Borton. Councilman Cavanagh.
Here.
Councilwoman Perrow.
Here.
Councilwoman Strater.
Here.
Councilman Hoagland.
Here.
Councilman Byrne.
Here.
Mayor Simison.
Here.
Next item is the Pledge of Allegiance. If you'd all please rise and join us in the pledge. Our next item is the community invocation. Mr. Clerk, do we have any sign up?
We did not have any sign up this week.
Okay. Then with that, we'll move on to the adoption of the agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Byrne.
I move the adopt, the agenda is published.
Second the motion.
I have a motion, a second, to adopt the agenda is published. Is there any discussion? If not, all in favor, signed by by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed nay. The ayes have it, and the agenda is adopted. Next up is the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Byrne.
Move that we approve the consent agenda for the mayor to sign and for the clerk to attest.
Second the motion.
I have a motion, a second, to move the consent agenda. Is there any discussion? If not, all in favor, signed by by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed nay. The ayes have it, and the consent agenda is adopted and agreed to. There are no items moved from the consent agenda, so public forum. Mr. Clerk, do we have someone to sign up out of the public forum?
Mr. Mayor, we did not.
Okay. Then with that, we will move on to resolutions. So.
Mr. Mayor. Sorry, I don't mean to interrupt, there was somebody, I think in the audience that was raising their hand that wanted to maybe do the public forum, and I didn't know if.
That's okay. Typically, that's not how we do it. We do, you need to sign up in advance for public forum items. I'd rather we keep with the process without going down that direction. Next item up is resolutions. Item 16 is resolution number 21-2294. Council, this is a resolution to reappoint two members to our Parks and Recreation Commission, Joe Greer and Keith Bevan, and a third member, Mandy Roberts, who's taking the place of one of our members who stepped down, who did not want to seek reappointment. Commission President Greer and myself, we met with Mandy Roberts, who's here before you tonight to be considered. And if you're looking for someone that can really bring experience into the, into the commission through practical, real-life experience, I think we hit a home run, quite frankly. You know, having someone with that landscape architecture and who's been through public processes, through her professional career, that can really bring that element to the commission. And quite frankly, I'm sure Mike would love to have her some, even as an ad hoc consultant for some of the work that we've got a lot of work going on in the, in the Parks and Recreation Department generally. But as a, as a commission member, I think that she'll be a valuable asset to them and add a very important skill set to them, as well as just a love for the community and a love for parks as a general standing. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions before asking you to seek approval of that. And Mandy is here in the audience and can come and speak up afterwards if so inclined. I have a motion then.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Perrow.
I move that we approve resolution number 21-2294. Resolution of the mayor and the city council, city and Meridian, to reappoint Joe Greer to seat six, Keith Bevan to seat eight, and appoint Mandy Roberts to seat seven of the Meridian Parks and Recreation Commission, and providing an effective date.
Second.
I have a motion, a second. Is there any discussion? If not, all in favor, signed by by saying aye.
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 Opposed nay. The ayes have it, and the resolution is agreed to. Thank you very much. Mandy, would you like to come forward and make any comments?
Thank you so much, council members. I wasn't really prepared to make any formal remarks, but I just want you to know that I'm very happy and honored to serve the community. And it's been, while I've traveled around the world and worked throughout the Pacific Northwest and, and west, it's good to be home and it's good to be in this, working in this capacity for the community. And I look forward to having a lot of meaningful involvement and contributions to our future. So thank you.
Thank you, Mandy. All right. With that, Council President Byrne, I'm going to turn the meeting over to you for the rest of the evening.
Got it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Onto item number 17, Department of Commission reports. Turn the time over to Mike Barton.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Thanks for the opportunity to come to talk to you this evening about a potential beautification project that's close to downtown. I've got a couple exhibits that I think Chris is pulling up right now, so. Pause here and. Yeah, looks like it's on. Let's give it another second here.
Hey, Mike. What is orange and sounds like a parrot?
I don't know. What is orange and sounds like a parrot?
Parrot.
Okay.
Pretty good.
Right. It's good.
Why you have to be here live, folks? Just don't translate.
Uh, no, nothing. Just get up there.
Mr. Borden.
Mr. Byrne.
Do you have a, do you have a follow-up joke to that?
I'll just, I'll pause and wait, wait for another joke?
Oh.
Are we ready to roll? Okay, let's go.
During the meeting, so mayor steps out.
So, about a year ago, we were asked to look into the possibility of beautifying this remnant parcel downtown that was in the split corridor developed. There was a couple of parcels that ACHD took over and landscaped, and Parks and Rec maintains those. One of them has a piece of art in it. The other one to the north is landscaped, and Nine Mile Creek goes through, and it's fairly attractive, attractive as an entry to the city. There is one piece, though, however, that's not landscaped, and it is phenomenisore, chronically full of weeds and goat heads. So we were, have been in contact with the property owner over the last year, and they thought they might develop it. And we just kind of paused and periodically checked in with them about the possibility of either a purchase or a license agreement to allow us to make these improvements. And it'd be a one-year license agreement that renewed automatically every year until the point in time that there was a legitimate development application that came before the city. Developing this piece of property would be difficult because of floodplain issues and Napa Meridian easement that goes through it, and then also access. Their only point of access is off Ada Street. So they can't take access off, off Meridian Road. So we are looking for direction this evening from you, if, about entering into a one-year license agreement with the property owner that would renew automatically year to year until the time that there's a legitimate development application that comes before the city. If there is a desire to do this, we could bring back a budget amendment for the cost of the landscaping, the cost of the maintenance, and a license agreement with Napa Meridian. If that were the case, we could bring that budget amendment back and have this installed, finished by late spring of '22. We could, as an alternate, I didn't put it on the slide here, but we could bring this through the regular budget process next year, if that's your desire as well. So I'll stop there and be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Thanks, Mike. Questions from council?
Council President Byrne.
Ms. Perrow.
So if the city were to invest improvements in this, and we had a license agreement, the, how would the, would the owner benefit from that if they chose not to continue in a license agreement with us? Essentially, would they receive those, receive those improvements for free? Or how would that work, that we would protect the investment, not owning the property?
Council President and Councilwoman Perrow, that's, that's a good question. And we haven't really thought through that much, but we could put that in the license agreement that, I mean, if we made those improvements, the only way that they would, that they could go back in or, or not renew the license agreement is if there was a development application in front of the city. They would have to be serious. They couldn't just say, they couldn't kick us out.
Okay, so it'd be a permanent.
Yeah.
Scenario.
It, it would renew automatically year over year until the time that there is a development application. From what I understand, with the current floodplain issues and some of the initiatives to open up Nine Mile Creek and, and minimize or reduce or eliminate that floodplain in downtown Meridian, it's, it's five-plus years. At least, and likely could be longer. So I think that's what the investment we're looking at is a, you know, worst case goes away in five years.
President.
Mr. Borden.
Mike, I think it's a great idea. We've talked about this for some time. This is probably the only solution for this out parcel. Entryway in or down. Investment makes sense, whether it's done now or as part of the budget. I would say now, only if there was some risk that the stars wouldn't align right in the summer. Got all the parties, you know, in agreement to doing it, then feel comfortable with a budget amendment.
Council President and Councilman Borton, the only risk would be not being able to execute it late next fall, or next fall. It would, it would be an entire year before it was finished. I mean, it would be spring of '23 instead of '22, so.
And, and, Mr. President. I think it is just collateral benefit. You do some small project like that, it's, it's, it sends the right message to adjacent property owners and, and just the beautification of one property begets the next, and it just, it sends the right leadership message to what down.
Mr. President.
Uh, Mr. President.
Mr. Mr. Neri.
Uh, Mr. President, members of the council, to repeat back on Mike's other answer to the prior question. City, I don't believe owns the ground that the art piece is on either. That big tree, I don't believe we own that. I think ACHD.
Correct.
Yeah. And so we don't have any ownership, but we have a $90,000 property. So if there was ever a need that they needed that for a road improvement or something like that, that's not possible. So I, I think Mike's idea, if they're willing to do that, and basically allow us that license agreement, with only really the termination factor being an application, bangs the road, make a road improvement, edge of irrigation, whatever. And I think, I think that could certainly be a deal.
Mr. President.
Mr. Per, Mrs. Per.
Um, so Mike, if, if the member of, anyone were to vandalize that property or remove something the city has placed, or not being an owner, how does that work? And maybe this is a question from Mr. Neri. How does that work legally to pursue reparation for something along those lines? Is, is that part of the license agreement as well, that we then take on sort of ownership rights in that sense? Somebody drives over it. I mean, that's some expensive landscaping, right?
Let's, hypothetically, if somebody went out there and decided to spin cookies in the middle of it and tear up the grass, we would, we would be, have to repair it, because I think that falls under the, the maintenance category. And we, we wouldn't be fulfilling our end of the duty if we didn't repair it. We wouldn't, it'd be, you know, we'd have to maintain it.
Mr. President.
Mr. Cavanagh.
Mike, I'm in agreement. I think it's, it's a terrific idea. I think bring a budget. I'd be supportive of a budget amendment if it was brought forth now as opposed to waiting till budget cycle. In part because I think that this may be a, almost a pilot or a step forward in terms of maybe seeing a community beautification budget line item come forth on an annual basis. I start to think of, you know, the spot between Ten Mile and Black Cat on Cherry, or on McMillan, between Linder and Ten Mile, where we've got some pretty well-developed out pieces of land, but are just kind of weed areas, in part because either they're the waterway or, or issues with current residential homes, that we could potentially use this as a pilot show that it works, and then maybe take a little piece of Meridian each year at a time and, and clean it up, get it looking better.
Mr. President. Mr. Hoagland. My two cents. I, I'm in favor of moving forward and doing the budget amendment process, so I think it's a great idea. We need to, we need to do that. Make that all look good. That is an entryway. Mr. Neri, what type of action are we looking for tonight? Just some head nods, and that's, is that good enough?
Oh, Mr. President, yeah. I think at this point, I think it's good enough. We'll, we'll get with Mike. We'll probably have Mr. Byrne. The irrigation, is it still owned by Tates? So, yeah, so Tate's Rents still owns that. So we'll speak with them, and we'll, we'll just begin the process. We'll get an agreement back.
Bring back a license agreement and a budget amendment the same, same evening.
Small donation from Tates, whatever.
I'll ask.
Thanks, Mike.
Good. Thank you.
Right, that takes us to item number 18 of tonight's agenda. It's a public hearing. Number H-2021-0059. Turn the time over to staff.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council. I'm not, Sonya Allen. I am Caleb Hood. I am going to present this project for her, and actually the next one as well. So bear with me a little bit here, but I think I've got my bearings and understand the two projects I'm going to present tonight. The first one being Regency at River Valley. So this, this project was actually continued from your September 28 hearing, but you really didn't have a hearing. It was re-notice for tonight. The applicant did add some conceptual additional units for this project, so new notices went out. This is only a development agreement modification request. The site consists of 2.57 acres that are currently zoned CC and CG. We had that earlier. And now I'm not seeing that slide. So I'm going to have to orient you or pull up Google Earth a little here. But there's zoning, again, split zoning on the property, CC and CG located at 3270 and 3280 East River Valley Street. And the other address is 2480 North Eagle Road. So this is just north of River Valley Street. The Co-op and the other BACH project, the Regency at River Valley, their first two phases are directly east. And there's a mattress firm right in the corner there. There's a signal at this intersection, so this is the undeveloped land, just off of that driveway. And I apologize that the zoning and the comp plan somehow got, that slide got taken out. So there are two existing development agreements on this site. And when I say this site, one of them, one development agreement applies to the site, again, directly due east of the mattress firm. And then the other development agreement is the larger properties that are to the north. This has a comp plan designation of mixed-use regional currently. That northern portion of the site is already entitled with self-service storage facility. And the southern portion had not only the retail building that, that is out there currently today, again, right here, is an existing building, but the conceptual plan, see if I can move you all out of the way. The conceptual plan had a future potential drive-through building that was also part of that, that development agreement that currently is on the books. This option A is no longer really viable, because again, the, the mattress store went in here. in here. So really, you're looking at option B, so it would modify the development agreement to not have the drive-through use, but use this driveway to get to the majority of the project that you see on the upper end of this site. So the summary again is to replace both of those development agreements with one new development agreement for this, for the subject property and give conceptual approval for multifamily project, again, which would essentially be the third phase of the Regency at River Valley, which you can see some of that project just on their conceptual site plan with the BACH storage project, consisting of 134 apartment units in concept and a mix that would include a mix of studio, one and two-bedroom units. The buildings are conceptually five feet tall. So again, I keep saying conceptually because this would require a future conditional use permit if council is so inclined to basically vacate the two existing development agreements and create this new one that would open the door for them to come back in with the CUP for multifamily on this site. I, I will just note that there may be changes to, here's the submitted conceptual plan that they've submitted. Additional changes may be necessary. Staff did not do a detailed comprehensive review of this site. So again, that will occur with the CUP. So just a disclaimer or a note that when, if a, a conditional use permit for multifamily is proposed on the site, some additional changes may be necessary. It's my understanding Sonya did do some of the initial calculations for parking and open space and amenities and things like that, but we have not done that detailed review. Same thing with the elevations. We haven't gone through that whole process of evaluating the project for full compliance with, with city standards. So staff is supportive of the proposed development agreement modification and has included the recommended development provisions in section six of the staff report. I know Brandon Whalen is here from BACH Homes. So with that, I will turn it over back to you, Mr. President, with any questions.
Thank you, Caleb. Any questions for Caleb?
Mr. President?
Ms. Pro.
Caleb, thank you very much. I'm curious if you could share some more detail with us on staff's recommendation for approval on this. It seems to me that from a zoning standpoint, I mean, I'm understanding, I'm understanding the recommendation, but I, from a, a function standpoint, I'm, I'm not completely understanding the support of putting residential just so close up to a state highway. I just want to understand from staff's perspective the support of that.
Yeah, I, I appreciate that question, and I'm not, this is gonna be me now, not Sonya, but we have talked about it. So from my perspective, this, this site, the, the two lots, certainly on the north anyways, I will leave the, the one that's just east of the mattress business out of what I'm about to say, because that one, I'm not as familiar with, but I know that the two sites where, where the multifamily project sits on the concept plan, we've been talking about that site for a long time, and one of the problems with that site is access. So any viable retailer tells us anyways that they need, they need, want direct access to Eagle Road for anything to happen there. So that's, at least the feedback we're hearing is a lot of the reasons it sat there this long is because of the access restrictions and problems that it creates to get out. And I will just say, I mean, that's really close to the signal at River Valley too. So turning even left into this site is going to be difficult. So it's very nice that there's cross-access with the first two phases of Regency, so motorists primarily can get through that project and back and forth and use their main entrance that's just off screen here to get to and from that collector roadway. I will also say, you know, obviously it's entitled right now with, with storage. It's tough. I will say the last, the last storage concept we saw was fairly attractive, but that's something else along an entryway corridor with 40,000 or 50,000 cars a day that are driving by. That's kind of hard to make it look nice and feel like part of the community. So I, I get it. I mean, I'll be honest, I live within a half mile of Eagle Road. I can hear it. So your question, you know, is it an ideal location? For some it is, because there's a lot of things around here, including Eagle Road, which has access again to entertainment and jobs and recreation very close. So on the face of it, again, not for everybody to live that close, but there, there are a future transit corridor here where I think density makes some sense. So again, just all those things where we really were trying to get maybe some retail out here or, or an office complex, just that really never took hold. And I'm not saying that residential is the best, but I think that this works, and I'm satisfied with it anyways.
Mr. President?
Ms. Pro.
Thank you very much, Caleb. I appreciate that. That was very helpful. I, I'd like to ask the applicant if they would answer that same question when they come forward.
Mr. President?
Ms. Ritter?
Thanks. Maybe just a process question. So doing this as a DA modification seems a little bit different because it's such a huge change in use. So I was just curious from the planning department's perspective, doing this as a DA modification, is there any part of our normal process that's not as robust or that we wouldn't see as something coming kind of de novo in front of us?
So, Mr. President, Councilwoman Strater, yes, and so there is, and it's, it's kind of tough. I mean, you like to see the package deal, right? You had a, a similar discussion on a project Hickory and Fairview recently where the plat was coming and we're, we're gonna, we're gonna change the development agreement modification first, and then we'll come back with the subdivision. So there is a little bit of, and that's why even looking at, you know, section six of the development agreement, it maybe is a little too specific. I think there's disclaimers in there that say, you know, conceptual site plan and, and, but it does say this many number of units and five-story buildings, and so that's, if approved, this would only go to the Planning and Zoning Commission. If you approve the development agreement modification, it would not come back to council. Now again, it needs to, whatever comes back in with that CUP still gets reviewed for compliance with city code, but unless appealed, it would, you guys would not see it.
Mr. President?
Mr. Hoagland?
Just a quick question, Caleb, whether it's a storage unit or multifamily, I remember we spent a lot of time on cross-access easement to the business on the north. That does still exist. I think I saw on one of the earlier slides, it said cross-access agreement.
Mr. President, Councilman Hoagland, yes, and I'm sorry, I didn't point that out. I was a little flustered that there wasn't the, the zoning and, and comp plan maps in the presentation. But yeah, you can conceptually see that. And again, in, in section six of the staff report, there is a new development agreement provision that requires both the cracks, three, three-way cross-access basically to the north, which is the China Buffet, and then tying in with the other phase of Regency. So you can see that, I know the shading is a little bit difficult, but you can see some of that cross-access to those projects. And then again, across all three of these parcels out to the public street at River Valley.
Okay, thanks, Caleb.
Perfect. Let's turn the time over to the, the applicant for further.
Council President, members of the Meridian City Council, my name is Brandon Whalen with BACH Homes located at 1650 State Street, Raper, Utah, 84020.
Mr. Whalen, can you, can you, sorry, can you pull the microphone to you? It's, make sure we hear you.
Yes. Thank you for the opportunity to share our proposal with you. As Caleb stated, this would be the third phase of the Regency at Riverview. The first two phases have been very successful, and BACH saw the opportunity to purchase those two parcels that fronted along Eagle Road. They had self-storage appropriated for that, but then thought that there might be a higher and better use of that property. And so with that cross-access easement from Riverview, they thought that a multifamily residential development on this property would make sense, and they had good success with phase one and phase two. And they also felt that this building located right next to those existing phases and would be able to benefit from the amenities that were provided, the pool and the clubhouse. And so we thought that it really would relate well to the two phases that are currently improved out there. So that's why they're before you today is to amend that DA from the storage units to allow this five-story multifamily housing project. We think that, yes, there is some noise that is generated from Eagle Road, but we can use sound attenuation construction practices to attenuate or lower that sound presence as much as possible. And we think that the presence of the building itself out on Eagle Road will be a, a member of the community and the neighborhood that will be a strong presence, and it will look good from Eagle Road, from both citizens and people passing through. So with that, we think that this is an opportunity to provide an additional 134 units on the property, which would represent the highest and best use of the property with the access challenges that it has, as Mr. Hood stated. We recognize that we will have to go through a conditional use permit process, which will have a design review element associated with it. So we are prepared to bring forward a building that, that we can present as using materials that are aesthetically pleasing and durable. So with that, we support all of the staff's work and their recommendation of approval, and I would stand for any questions that you may have.
Any questions?
Mr. President?
Ms. Ritter, is that you?
Thank you, Mr. Whalen. Appreciate you coming before us. You know, what I do, I, it's just a very preliminary plan. I assume it would look a lot like your other phases. What I don't see here is any kind of green space in the middle. I understand it fronts Eagle Road. I don't know how realistic that is, but certainly here in this middle portion, I think there'd be some sort of an opportunity there. Did you have excess open space in phases one and two of your other projects that you feel, or help me understand how you're gonna tackle the open space requirements and amenity requirements you would normally ask for?
We, we are looking at that, and we know that a calculated, Chair, Mr. President of the Chair and members of the council, we recognize that there are open space requirements, and that is something that we are going to address in the site plan. This was something that was generated with a good faith effort to meet all of the requirements. We are hopeful that there would be some form of flexibility to recognize that it's right next door to two phases that do have outdoor barbecue stations, a kiddie play area that both in the water and dry land, swing sets and such, pools. So there, there are some amenities in the existing phases that these people will benefit from, but we would like to green it up as well in the parking field and along Eagle Road. So that is something that we do want to address, but we were hopeful that we could work with staff to come to some form of an understanding that if maybe we met 85% of the standard of open space, that the previous two phases could lend open space to make up for that 15% or some kind of calculation like that.
Mr. President?
Ms. Ritter?
So that, that makes me a little nervous personally as a council member, because I think it's important that we're kind of raising our bar on the standards that we're holding in the city, and I don't have a whole package in front of me right now. Like, I can't see the open space calculation from your previous phases, and I'm a control freak. Everybody knows that about me. So it will go to planning and zoning, but it wouldn't come back before us. And I'm a little bit, don't get me wrong, I totally would rather have multifamily on a transportation corridor that looks great than self-storage, but I'm a little bit nervous that we're not seeing the complete package of information that we would normally see at this phase because of the way it's being done process-wise. So that's just something that I'm gonna have to wrestle with, but that is a concern that I have. I think there might be an opportunity for you to put some kind of courtyard or something in the middle, I would hope. I'm, I'm gonna chew on that for a bit.
Mr. President?
Mr. Hoagland?
Mr. President, thank you, Mr. Whalen. Appreciate your presentation, and like Councilwoman Strater, I, I think this is a better use than, than storage. And I just want to find out actually from Mr. Hood, if you wouldn't mind, just to give, we know the details aren't there, that if this were to be approved tonight, that would move forward, and you guys would look at it, and that open space issue just from a large picture where it's another phase of an existing development, is that doable to work things, to make it work somehow? What, because if, if there's gonna be a lot of obstacles there, you know, that's, that's kind of a, a tipping point. So can you give us some general idea of how that might move forward?
Yeah, Mr. President, Councilman Hoagland, yeah, I appreciate your last comment about, you know, a general idea, because I'm not exactly sure how we'll move forward. We, we don't have the details in front of us now, but I can use some past examples of how this potentially could move forward. And I was just re-scanning Sonya's staff report, and it, it does call it out, you know, that the, the standards listed for open space and amenities will be evaluated. And that's really where we start is, this is looking at it as a standalone parcel that needs to comply on its own with those amenities. In the past, though, there, we have allowed some of that transfer. Some of that, though, we, we do push back and say, well, that's a bait and switch. If you proposed 18% open space and now it drops down to 15 and accounted for this project, well, then that's not the same project anymore that we approved previously. So it is a conditional use permit, and I think the starting point is comply on, again, as a standalone phase, but with the conditional use permit, there, a case could be made that you've got the barbecue pits and the pools and those types of things. So maybe there's an amenity package that is better than maybe the open space percentage, but it's a higher quality of, you know, you know, maybe it's a tiered open space or something. I don't know what they're gonna design, but I guess, long story short, is there, there is a conversation that occurs, and again, with the conditional use permit, there's some flexibility to say, this seems appropriate for that development. But the, the starting point will be city code, and we will expect going into it that this phase complies with the amenities and open space requirements.
Mr. President?
Ms. Pro.
Caleb, because this is in a commercial zone, is it still gonna be required to have the same buffer between the highway and the residential as they would if it was in residentially zone?
Yeah, Council President, Councilwoman Perle, yes, I'm just gonna, I wanna double check to see if that is actually a development agreement provision, but yes, it is not. The landscape buffer on materials is specific to the classification of the roadway, not based on, on zoning. So let me just double check and make sure that's in here somewhere. But even if it's not, it would still be a, a standard provision of code. See the pathway? Yeah, I don't actually see the 25-foot-wide landscape buffer called out as I scan the, the DA provisions, but yes, that will be a requirement.
Mr. President? Mr. Neri?
So, Mr. President, maybe I just need some clarity from the applicant, but I thought the ask here was to create a development agreement separate and apart from the current Regency River Valley. So I'm not, I'm not one to be just clear with Caleb, but I don't know how we borrow somebody else's open space in a different development agreement that you're not bound to, and they're not bound to provide you anything. But I, I'm a little unsure how to craft that at the DA where it is another phase, but it's separate owners, separate agreements. There's nothing, we would have to amend the development agreement required to provide you cross-use. Is that what you're proposing to? Because I mean, I, I don't, I'm not totally sure in my head today how to make that make sense. I see what, I've read Sonya's staff report, but I don't see how we get to where you're proposing of a shared or borrowed or blended arrangement.
Council President, members of the City Council and Mr. Neri? Yes, so our proposal is for this property to be released from the existing development agreement, go through the conditional use permit, and develop another development agreement specific to this parcel. It was our intent to meet all of the standards and conditions of the zoning code for a multifamily residential development located within this district. In that event, that we're struggling to provide that open space requirement for the code, that the code requires, we were, would entertain the discussion with staff if, is there the ability to share some of these facilities? We did, not that it matters to the city of Meridian, but we have a very successful project out in Nampa that we did just off of Garrity behind the station, shopping center. It's called the Station at Gateway on Happy Valley and Stam Road, and we just did 110-unit Phase Two to that, because it just lends itself well, though, use the same access as the existing development does. The leasing will be done out of the clubhouse, and all of the residents have the ability to come use the pool and the barbecue stations. So that is working in that instance. To say that would work perfectly here or not is, is another discussion, but that was our intent to meet the standards standalone on this property. In that event where we fall a little bit short, they were hoping that by allowing these residents full access to all of the amenities that are provided in the existing Phase One and Phase Two of the Regency at Riverview, that that would be found acceptable in that event that, that we asked for. I'm not saying that we're gonna ask for that. I, I'm saying that we're gonna try to meet all of I I'm saying that we're going to try to meet all of the standards and conditions of the zoning code for a standalone parcel.
So, Mr. President, if I could follow up, that I guess my question, sir, though, is once we craft a new development agreement, you're you're no longer part of the other one. They're no longer a part of you. So there's nothing in that agreement that requires that provides you any cross-access, no cross-shared uses, nothing. And you'll have your own agreement. So I guess that feels a little premature to me without having some level of agreement and some modification to the existing Regency at River Valley development agreement that maintains that shared access, maintains that shared use. And that way, if you're close with that addition, it doesn't, like Caleb said, doesn't diminish the percentage to a significant degree for the other parcel that's already developed. So I guess it's not, in my common experience, I can recall, where we did another phase with a different owner, its own independent development agreement, somehow used some of the uses of the adjacent properties that are already developed. I I don't know how we do that. So to me, it seems a little premature without some agreement from the first development as well as some idea of what those shared uses are going to be for us to craft something at this. I guess I.
Mr. President.
Mr. Borton. I appreciate legal counsel's comments. It's kind of spot on, this one. The the concept has legs. I get what you're trying to do and why, but it's just not cooked, quite frankly, to make a decision. I think with the DA being the only time this council sees it, those specifics will have to be there. You look at this project, if it came in with Phase One and Two, it certainly would have questions on the connectivity to the amenities in Phase One and Two. Right? You can clearly see there, if you're going to walk to the pool, right? You got to get out, go through the parking lot down the street. And you can't, connectivity you would normally see admittedly is not there. So to even contemplate waiving amenities through sharing, all of that would have to be ironed out in writing, part of the DA. None of that's done yet. So if you could get there, it, you're just not there. And I don't think we could act on that. I couldn't support this as presented just because of those uncertainties. And Mr. Neri is is spot on with that guidance and caution. Just trying to be frank with some of those problems.
Mr. President, Councilmember Borton. We're coming through the front door with the expectation that this parcel, even if it requires a redesign of what you're seeing here, we will meet all of the standards contained within the development code for the city of Meridian. Does this plan today meet those standards? We're not sure. As Caleb said, we didn't do a full evaluation of the number of units, the amount of open space required, the landscaping. This was just a presentation of highest and best use. What would a five-story apartment building fronting on Eagle Road look like? So our in-house architects drafted up something. Did we have enough parking to provide for that? Yes, it looks like we do. So it hasn't been finalized. And it was our impression that going back through the conditional use permit process, that would be where the city, staff, and the Planning and Zoning Commission had the ability to review the project and ensure that it met all of the standards. So what we have before you today, we're not saying this is exactly what we will build. This was a visual representation of a multifamily housing project instead of a storage facility on these two parcels. So we wanted to excise it out because the current approval is for storage on this property, the current development agreement. So we just want to reel back the development agreement, not require those storage units to be built on Eagle Road, and come back before the Planning and Zoning Commission, through a review from the staff for a multifamily housing project on this property, meeting all of the standards of the city Meridian Development Code.
So would it be, would it be accurate to characterize it like a Phase One of One?
Yes, sir.
And because I think your references to Phase One and Two of River Valley kind of maybe confused it, at least for me, that really what you're asking for is this is a standalone, exclude any reliance on anything to do with property to the east. This would have all of the amenities, parking features, designed to be a truly independent singular project.
Mr. President of the Council, Councilmember Borton, yes, that is correct.
Mr. President, and if that's the desire of the council, I mean, you could make that explicit provision in here, right? That talks about it being a standalone project. And that goes to some of the previous discussion too about, not that they couldn't have an agreement amongst themselves to share those amenities, but it would have to be a standalone project on its own merits. That way, if this Phase One of One is sold to someone else, it still has all the required open space amenities potentially. You could make that a DA provision.
Mr. President. I can add one more question then. But I'm looking at the existing approved development agreement, the option A and B that Caleb showed previously. I don't see cross-access in the location that's showed on your newer drawing. Is there cross-access required in those two locations already existing in the River Valley One and Two Development Agreement? Because otherwise, you're only building your side of the gate, not theirs. If they don't want to put, if they want to put a gate there, I don't have any means to stop them. They have to provide you cross-access, just like you'd have to write into that.
Mr. President, Members of the Chair, City Council, and Mr. Neri. The ownership for Phase One, Phase Two, and the proposed Phase Three is the same. Bach Homes owns all three. And at this point, as we develop this new property, Phase One of One, at that point in time, we could provide the amenities and and access pedestrian vehicular to tie the two projects together and then put the cross-access easements in place. So that's something that is still within our ability and capacity to do as the ownership of all three parcels would be under the same ownership.
So I just want to be clear of what the ask is then. You're asking ultimately to amend the existing development agreement to maintain cross-access as well as require cross-access on the new piece.
If if. I don't see any reason for us, we're going to lease probably out of the existing clubhouse. So there has to be some form of cross-connectivity between the phases. So they didn't anticipate this phase when when they constructed Phase Two. They thought that was going to be the terminus. So I think that with this new Phase Three or Phase One of One, tying the the projects together as much as possible would be beneficial. That way, people can can go between the phases without having to go out onto Riverview. They could just stay within the development. And that would be easier, both for the residents of the development and on the community's transportation system.
Mr. President, Members of the Council, again, not trying to take over the conversation here. But so when the original approval was done for the storage units, it was very clear to the city by the property owners, by Bach, I guess, or River Valley, they did not want vehicular cross-access. They only wanted pedestrian access, and that's it. And that was very limited because it was storage units, so for security and such. So there was no, there was no vehicular access that was not limited because it was only the storage units. That has to remain for this to work. And so we will have to amend the existing one. Can't just take you out completely. We have to amend the one that exists as well as create a new one for this parcel. And if you're the property owner of both, that's fine, we could do that. But I want to make clear if that's what you're asking, that's what we have to have.
Here, I would like to just elevate the point that when they were viewing it as a storage unit, they wanted that to be separate properties. And now that they're looking at, hey, this makes sense for a residential development, third phase or Phase One of One that ties in and relates to the existing, the attitude or the thought of connectivity changes at that point in time.
Mr. President. Mr. President, Council also, and Mr. Neri, when the storage building was going to be there, they they were required to have secondary access. And this building will definitely require secondary access. So they're going to have to have something to get a secondary access to the building. So it's it's going to be required by me.
President.
Row.
Change the topic just a bit. I'm I'm pretty familiar with Regency and kind of how vehicles move through that. It's not the smoothest. And the entrance, the main entrance for for Regency is is odd and, in my opinion, not exceptionally safe. So now we're going to add an additional three to four hundred vehicles, if you have two per unit, let's say, that are going to be using that same entrance to come into this whole complex. Am I understanding that correctly?
Mr. President, Councilwoman Perio.
Perro.
Perro, sorry. This has a new access point that was closer to the mattress store and the proposed drive-through restaurant. That will be their main access point to this phase. And so it'll be a new access point that they're using, not the existing one that that you mentioned.
Is is that a right-in, right-out only, or?
Would be a right-in, right-out only.
Okay, so if someone's coming and wants to turn left, left from, I can't remember the name of the street that runs to the south here off of fifty-five, they're going to have to still go into the main entrance, correct? Am I, am I understanding that correctly?
I think they would have to travel east on Riverview
Correct.
Do a U-turn to come back, and yet, yes, into the problem.
Okay.
Any other questions for the applicant?
Mr. President.
Mr. Governor.
Mr. Whelan, appreciate kind of you walking us through this. I want to touch on, I guess, one other subject, one that's giving me a little bit of pause. And I'm sure you've reviewed the staff report, all the agency letters. And so the letter from West State School District is always kind of one of the first places that I go and look. And I know that they use a very generous calculation for multifamily. Even so, I think what they, this would generate, maybe they assume fourteen additional students. And it doesn't sound like a lot, except for when we've got a high school that's already significantly over capacity. And I'm I'm always sensitive to, if we know a school is over capacity, why would we start looking at another residential unit that would only add more students? Can you help me walk through why this project meets that high threshold of adding more students to an already taxed high school?
Oh, Mr. President, Members of the City Council, I think that there is a change in demographics. And single-family homes generate, families, you know, families want to live in single-family homes. People that choose to live in an apartment complex typically are, maybe they're waiting a little bit longer to get married. Maybe they're waiting a little bit longer to have children. But a hundred and thirty-four units in a multifamily housing project will not generate the number of students that a hundred and thirty-four single-family homes will generate. So in this instance, it's a hundred and thirty-four units. But the people that are choosing to live in this environment are are the people that are waiting longer to get married and waiting longer to have children.
Mr. President. For me, and Ms. Whelan, that that may have been true in the two thousand and five or two thousand and six. But and maybe that's how it is in Draper. But in in Meridian, we're seeing a lot of single families that are living in in multifamily projects. And and clearly, at least your sister property anticipated that because there's pools and playgrounds, amenities, not just for for single people, but for families. And so I'll just be, I think for a lot of the reasons that we've heard tonight, I'm I'm struggling with this particular piece. And I think it's added on top of it that we've at least got at least one school that's already capacity. That it makes me at least take pause if this is, I know you said it's the the highest and best use. I guess I haven't got to that same conclusion yet.
Mr. President. I apologize. I really do want to revisit the the access conversation. Just Neri leaned over to me and encouraged me to ask Caleb if he would please pull up an aerial view of Regency, one, Phases One and Two, and how the vehicles would flow through. This is, I think this is critical as we're discussing any kind of requirements we would put into a DA.
If I may, as Caleb's pulling that up, I I may have misspoke that this would be a right-in, right-out only. I'm not sure of the spacing requirements that ACHD would require of this. And so there could be the possibility for it to be a three-quarters movement, right-in, right-out, left-in, which would lend itself well to that, coming from Eagle Road, being able to make a left-hand turn in.
Mr. President.
Row.
That River Valley Street already has a barrier there. So I'm pretty sure it's it's likely going to be a right-in, right-out. I can't say that unequivocally, unequivocally either, because I'm not the highway department, but there already is an existing barrier that you can't make left, make a left turn on. But I I don't know exactly what would be, maybe this is a question for staff. What would be the appropriate request to make of an applicant to show the safety factor of using the the entrance for the other, the other part of the development? If we, if they are going to in some way be tied together with access through the DAs? I don't know what it is we would ask to show that safety factor. I just know my own personal experience, having spent time in there. It's it's, I would have a hard time adding that many more vehicles coming through how it's currently being accessed. So I think the staff is possibly bringing something up for us.
Sorry, Mr. Mr. President, Councilwoman Pro, I got some of the labels that I can't figure out how to get off. So you have to bear with me a little bit. But here's the existing, oh, sorry, sorry. I'm out of practice. Thank you. All right. You don't see that now? So again, here's existing, the Regency project, Phase One and Two. Here's the site that we're talking about this evening with the existing access point. We can zoom in to the the center median there today. And again, that was part of the conversation. I heard some of it while I was looking up the map. I mean, I think that's, some of that is still to be determined by ACHD. They will look at the stacking. I mean, that's something, if they're going to allow lefts in here, you got to have a stacking. And I think you're getting pretty close to the intersection here. So there may may be an opportunity for left out of the site. I'm not a traffic engineer, but I I don't see a left in probably working in this location. So Mr. Whelan mentioned the U-turn. You could potentially do a U-turn, or as we've been talking about, could come through their project and and up. I can zoom in and out how far you'd like me to go. The safety concern that you have, I I did not poll or ask police to to look in their database to see if there have been any crashes. You know, I do see, again, I live near this area. There is pretty high pedestrian traffic, obviously, at this intersection driveway with the co-op and some of the shopping and the rest of the village there. I do not know, this has not come to our attention, that the Transportation Commission in the past couple of years, there was a request a few years ago, a couple, few years ago, to put a crosswalk here. But the volumes at that time, ACHD did not warrant that, and there is not one there today. There's multiple questions there, and I don't feel like I've touched all of them. So if you could please tell tell me where you want to zoom in or out to or what you, what else I can address, that would be appreciated.
Mr. Borton, you mentioned this to to compound it. Do I recall that the Eagle Road access just south of the Great Wall goes away when there's that connectivity?
Correct.
Yeah. That funnels that through this as well.
President.
Ms. Perro.
If I might recommend, when when you come before us again, because I anticipate this will be continued, if if nothing else, then to change the application to address the issues with the DA, that that potentially the property managers that are on site there can come and have some discussion with us about the flow of traffic through the project. I've driven through here, I don't even live in the area, just know people that live in there that where there's been vehicles that have backed out into the the drive aisle because of how the parking is designed. There's a lot of turns, you you kind of wind through here, and there's some blind corners and whatnot. And so I just, I have concerns from a, just a pure practical standpoint about putting a hundred and thirty-nine more units in that location and having them all be accessed through the same existing access that the the current property has.
Yeah, I appreciated the comments this evening with, from council. I think the dialogue's been great. I appreciate the presentations.
Yeah, I appreciated the comments this evening with from council. I think the dialogue has been great. I appreciate the presentations. Staff did excellent job. For me personally, and this is, this is a tough ask. I don't, I don't, I don't disagree that what you're proposing isn't the the highest of best use for this property. My number one concern is access, especially with the amount of traffic, the amount of units that you're going to be building. I just don't know how you overcome that. Any time when you have to do a semi U-turn to get into the main access point to your property causes me to pause, frankly. So I I don't, I don't mind continuing this. But that's, that's where I stand right now. But, you know, we were probably a little bit premature offering our our guidance and without taking public comment. So maybe it's time to see if there's anyone online or anyone that's available here at City Hall to offer any public comment. Ralph? No.
There was someone sign in on in person, but I don't believe he's here any longer and there is nobody online.
Okay. No public comment. Okay. Back you.
Oh, Councilman President, members of the city council, I appreciate your comments. And for what I've heard is that we need to ensure that there's a buffer along Eagle Road, that there needs to be open space at the amount required by code. Also, cross connectivity between the existing two phases, which would amend the existing DA that would allow provisions for at a minimum pedestrian, if not vehicular, cross access between the phases to be a requirement of the property. And I think you'd also like to hear from the property managers on how access in and off of the property is conducted. And so I'm prepared to, if we would continue this, to come back with answers to those questions.
Sounds good. What 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 date would you prefer?
Well, I live in Boise, so any any council meeting that you guys would like to have us back, I think that we can get to work on this and we can have visual representations done in two weeks' time. I don't know if that's too quick to come back or we're at your leisure. We we would come back whenever you would make time for us, we would come back as soon as possible.
Mr. President.
I think that I think that wouldn't be a terrible idea. It's just a matter of what that looks like for our staff to be able to create new new information for a presentation. So I'm going to punt to Caleb to see what that looks like for him, and then we'll make a decision.
Yep, Mr. President, I appreciate that. Honestly, I don't know how much of what Mr. Wayland, how he just summarized that, what you expect staff to do with that information, if anything. So if you'd like us to to take that and address that or just him present that to you without without staff's input. If if us, then we typically do need 15 days from when we receive that information to write up the memo to get it into the packet. So.
I I would prefer, and I think council would be an agreement that we would want you to be involved and you would, we would want you to craft something that would be in our best interest. And so we're looking at an open date of 1116 and we do have one public hearing on the 23rd. And so of November. So what does that look like for you, Caleb? Is that enough time?
Again, if two weeks and then another two weeks for us to analyze that. So roughly a month, I didn't, I don't have the calendar in front of me and I heard your dates, but I wasn't I mean, we're right around Thanksgiving anyways, right? I don't know what the, I don't know what the clerk has on those agendas, but we can, we can make that work.
So I I would, I would entertain a a continuance to November 23rd from a member of council.
Mr. President. Take public comment at at that hearing as well.
Yeah. So open.
I move that we continue file number H 2021 0059 to the hearing date of November 16th. Is that correct?
Or the 23rd.
November 23rd?
I would prefer the 23rd.
Okay. So that the applicant can provide additional information to us that was previously stated.
I have a motion. I have a second.
Second motion.
Got a motion as second to continue this application to 1123. Need discussion.
Mr. President.
Mr. Borton.
Part of that process and prep for that hearing, I think it would be really helpful. You probably already planned on doing so, but to coordinate with city legal counsel and have some of those specific DA provisions lined out. I know there's a lot of moving parts, but this one's a little unique, so that would make it more productive.
Mr. President.
Mr. Holman.
Question for Mr. Neri. I was wondering how far along that DA process can they go? Or or is it just points that these will be placed into the DA? Or are we actually going to look at a DA?
So, Mr. President, members of council, we're hoping we wouldn't have a DA prepared yet. We don't normally do that until this finding to work from. But we certainly can have a conversation with myself or one of my other deputy attorneys on what language we think is necessary. I think we've kind of held out a little bit tonight. Again, we need that cross access from both sides. We need to make sure it appears there's only one access point. Currently, so we need some assurance that that's going to remain and that also that if there's going to be a potential agreement between phase one and two and phase three for shared use of facilities, and we want that also spelled out because that would have to be in both. I think we can talk about language. And then if we can get more into detail, but we need to at least get
All right, I have a a motion and a second on the on the on the table. All those in favor signify by saying yes. Hi.
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 Any nay? Looks like the motion passes. Thank you. Moving on to item number 19, we have a public hearing for Hatch Industrial. That's item number H dash 2021 dash 0026. Turn the time over to the staff.
You again, Mr. President, members of council. The application you have before you for this project is actually twofold. There's the Comprehensive Plan Map Amendment and an annexation. Just a quick side note, because the last time I presented to council, I also had a comp plan map amendment. There's actually one more in the queue. We talked about that last time. So this, these are all submitted by that June deadline, but they've kind of gotten stretched out with continuances and things through the process. So there's still one more off of Locus Grove that was approved, I think, last week, three before by planning and zoning. So you'll see that in a few more weeks. But we did group those and looked at them all concurrently, but they're on different tracks. So just again, a quick side note there. So the the two applications include about a 42 acre comp plan map amendment and then an annexation and zoning of approximately 1.59 acres of land that's currently zoned R1 in Ada County. So the the properties are located, as you can kind of see here, on the east side of Linda Road, north of Franklin, south of the railroad tracks. So here's the railroad track. So it is all the properties with frontage on Linda Road between Franklin and the railroad tracks. There are some existing businesses in here, childcare facility, a women's birthing center, some some vacant parcels and then some single family homes kind of along that frontage there. On the other side, you can see this.
Mr. Mayor. Caleb, sorry to interrupt, but
Not showing it.
We're still on the
River Valley.
Please, yeah, stop me earlier. I'm sorry.
We're just trying to have you practice more and get back into the rhythm.
Well, hopefully I painted a nice picture. Linda Road, railroad tracks, Franklin. That's where we're at.
Isn't there a song about rhythm?
It's going to get you. All right. Sorry about that again. So all the properties are again located between Franklin Railroad Tracks. On the other side of the road is our existing industrial type of uses. So you have auto body repair, storage, some other, again, industrial type users on the other side of the road. And then again, on this side of the road, there are some existing businesses on along the frontage and where the MUC is actually shown on on the middle graphic, the future land use map graphic. You can see it better in the aerial, I guess, the existing warehouses and industrial buildings. So this frontage is really kind of sandwiched in between two industrial. One's more of a park and the other one is just more standalone complexes, I guess, for lack of a better term there. I do want to point out again, Comprehensive Plan Map Amendment and Annexation, but the annexation is only for the 1.59 acres, the roughly 40 acres that are left. This, any action tonight will not change the zoning for any of those properties. So they are what they are and would require a future application to change any of those. Again, the complian map amendment is to go from MUC or mixed use community to industrial. The concurrent application is for annexation to IL. So again, industrial on the 1.59 acres. Which is kind of in the middle of that overall that overall site. So you can see that a little bit here on the zoning map. The two parcels, they're again roughly halfway in between Franklin and the railroad track. So these are the only two parcels that are proposed for the annexation. All the rest of them are subject to the compliance map application. The applicant did submit a conceptual development plan. And again, I'm going to use some similarities to the last project, although different. A conceptual development plan shows roughly a 20,000 square foot industrial building with some potential warehouse and flex space. Again, same thing. This would be subject to all current city codes and standards for design review, certificate of zoning compliance, if approved in the industrial zone. We didn't, we did not receive, and they're not required, conceptual building elevations. So we haven't done that review on the the structure itself. But they would be required to comply with the Architectural Standards Manual after zoning to industrial. A little bit more that shown on this plan. There's a 30 foot wide utility easement on the on the east side of this property for Idaho Power. There is the parking that would be necessarily would necessary for the project, obviously. One access point to Linder. I will point out they are showing cross access and staff is supportive of that. So we can limit access points to the arterial roadway lender as well. So appreciate that. The cross access is shown. And again, there's a development agreement provision that requires that. I will also note, the last last thing I have to note is that the applicant is requesting some relief from the standard 20 foot, 25 foot wide landscape buffer requirement between industrial. So if zoned industrial, there are two residences, north and south of this property, still zoned in the county, but they are existing residences. And our code would require a 25 foot wide buffer between those uses to an industrial, on an industrial property. They are proposing requesting that you approve tonight five feet on either side. They have submitted letters of support for that request from each of those adjacent properties. So from the north, Mr. Reimer submitted consent and to the south, Mr. Olson submitted consent. So if you want to look at DA provision D on page 12 of the draft staff report for the development agreement, it calls that out. But I would request, if you're so inclined to approve that reduction in landscape buffer, our code does require that you take specific action on that. So if you could make in any motion for approval, address the landscape buffers anyways, that would certainly help. And I know that Mr. Jeff Hatch is here this evening, so I think I'll stop there and he can cover any gaps I may have made in the presentation. But, Mr. President, I will turn it back to you.
Thank you, Caleb. Any questions for staff?
Mr. President.
Ms. Perro.
Caleb, I for some reason, this, I was having a hard time wrapping my head around some elements of this. So the application for the annexation, if that's approved, then essentially the applicant could just submit for a building permit. I mean, they wouldn't need, there isn't anything else that would need to be done, right? So the request for the reduced buffer being being made with without actually knowing the function of the space, legitimately knowing the function of the space, because right now it's all completely conceptual. And how do we like, give us some guidance here on how to make that consideration? Because even if the current residents that live there are approving it, you know, if 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 the applicant uses the building for something that's a more intense use than what they're describing here, and we've approved this five foot buffer for these residences, I mean, how do we, help us understand how to kind of think through that, I I guess?
So, Mr. President, Councilwoman Pro. I think that's a legitimate concern. I I guess I would say, and and again, I'm not Sonia, so I don't know if this went into all of her analysis or not. But I do think there's a high probability that these other parcels will redevelop in the near future. And so the requirement for the 25 foot buffer will someday no longer be needed because you're going to have industrial to industrial to industrial and some of those residents will will again redevelop. I didn't know, but I'm sure most everyone, if not everyone, knows that Linda Road in this area was was widened and it's got curb gutter sidewalk now in a very nice corridor that can accommodate larger vehicles and larger trucks. And so again, I think it's one of those areas where we do want some more industrial in the city and makes a lot of sense to have more industrial. We're not trying to push the homes out necessarily. But when the existing homeowner says we're okay with the five foot buffer there, you know, I don't, I don't know that that's your concern. If you have that property owner saying, yep, we're good with five feet, it is there for their benefit. And I don't think it benefits the city or anyone else in the public to have a wider than that buffer. But there is some risk, to your point. They could sell and someone else wants to live there for another 20 years and you're and they're stuck with a five foot landscape buffer. So there, I guess, to answer your question, there is some risk. I can't remove all of that, the the questions in your mind. This could be a more intense, it could be more intense than warehousing and flex space. So again, there is some potential for nuisance in in this location. But again, when we get letters from those property owners, I tend to go, okay, well, you understand you're getting a five foot. One more, sorry, one more, one more point to that. It does not reduce the setback requirement. So it can only be the parking up to there. They couldn't put the building within five feet. So the building would still be 25, 30 feet, whatever that, whatever that setback requirement is. So I don't know if that helps or not, but there is a little bit of separation anyways from those uses.
Any more questions for staff? Seeing none, we'll invite the applicant to come up and hear from them.
Jeff Hatch with Hatch Design Architecture. Address is 200 West 36th Street, Boise, Idaho, 83714. Good evening, Mr. President and council members. Thank you for your consideration of our annexation application this evening. You have a presentation. Can everybody hear me? Okay, sometimes I stand to my back. Just wanted to just want to make sure. So.
Keyboard, not the mouse.
Caleb did a a great job kind of recapping the project that we wanted to just clarify again at our P and Z hearing. Was a gentleman there that was thinking we were annexing his property because it was involved in the future land use amendment. So I just wanted to clarify that the two subject properties would be annexed. The balance of it is just a an overlay modification of that future land use app amendment. With that, we have currently the the Creamline Industrial Park to the east. We have railroad tracks to the north and we have a range of industrial uses to our direct west as well as an irrigation canal to the south. So just kind of zooming in a little bit, you can see, you know, we're kind of surrounded by similar proposed uses, industrial uses, you know, mechanic and flex spaces and things of that nature in this area. Some larger and some smaller. You know, the the request for the the reduction in the setback, the that Commissioner Perro had some questions or concerns on, like to elaborate a little bit. To achieve what what staff wanted us to provide to justify that reduction took us about 12 months. Just prior to our P and Z hearing, the day of the the planning zoning hearing, the gentleman to the south happened to be in town at Cabela's. He's building a a house remotely in some place that doesn't have cell phone reception or email in Idaho. And we just happened to catch him and the the property owner of the subject application ran down, met with him, clarified the intent. He was like, oh, yeah, I remember these emails and things. And thanks for meeting with me. And so we were able to achieve that that signature as well as the one to the north. You know, a couple of public hearings on on this or neighborhood meetings on on this proposed project. And you know, with that, wanted to make sure, one, we have the buy-in from the adjacent neighbors that they're directly affected. But two, when the properties to the north and south are developed, we're still going to be maintaining the setbacks and the landscape buffers required for the industrial zone. And so it's kind of looking at, you know, achieving, you know, the concerns of the neighbors now, but achieving the concerns of the city as these parcels are developed. of the neighbors now, but achieving the concerns of the city as these parcels are developed in the future. The proposed project and application and some of, just for clarification, we did provide a floor plan and conceptual elevations that staff recommended be kind of tied to this application, that we don't have, you know, just a general idea out there. We have a proposed project, something that goes with this approval as far as documentation of what our intent is. And so we have a multi-flex building proposed. It would be industrial in nature, but we do have, you know, more of a street presence, retail on the frontage, and then kind of a large garage space for, for multiuses to each of the, those businesses. So with that, the proposed elevations that have been provided showcase a concept of, you know, something that's, you know, a little bit more retail in nature towards the street. So we have a lot more glazing that you would see across the street or in the tilt-up buildings elsewhere, something that's going to raise the standard of industrial buildings along this corridor. So, you know, as the balance of it is built out, long Linder, hopefully we are kind of helping set that standard and that bar for the city of Meridian. With that.
Any questions, Mr. Hatch? Ms. Perot?
With the, I imagine that you came forward with comp plan map amendment as, in talking with staff, probably city saw that as an opportunity to, to bring that forward. I don't know what the, the owners of those other parcels, what their involvement has been in this process, but has there been any conversation with any of the neighbors as you've gone through this in terms of if there, if there is going to be industrial development, future development? There's some county parcels here, some, some that are already annexed. How that would play out? Some of these parcels aren't very big, and I would assume that some of them would have to be, that they're, that, that some of the parcels would have to be purchased by the same owners to come forward with requests for projects. So are they, are most of them an acre or less? And really what I'm trying to get at is, we look at changing the comp plan amendment, is it even possible for these to become industrial use, just based on how they're owned, how they're currently divided in parcels? And maybe that's a question for staff as well. Just generally, is it possible to even, to practically make these, make this an industrial area with those current factors?
Caleb, can we go back to the overall, this roadmap that I had in my presentation? Am I helpful for this conversation? While you're pulling that up. So in our particular case, we merged two parcels to be able to do a fairly large, double-tiered industrial building. If you took our concept and, and just did it with a single row, you could achieve that on the same size parcels on either side. You would reduce the width or the depth of those units we're looking at. You take the same building, split it in half, and reduce it by 10 feet on each side for the, the depth of those units, you could do this within the property with a lot line adjustment on these two parcels. So the parcel to the south of, on this proposed parcel could easily achieve industrial building just in and of itself. The one on the north, in that particular case of the parcels that we're just talking, would be a little bit more problematic. If we go back to the balance of the, the parcels in question, the one directly north of us could be achievable, one on the far north could be achievable. Some of the ones in between may need to be merged over time, and in many cases, some of those are owned by the same property owners. So I think there are ways to that. You can see to the very northwest, there's an industrial building right up against the train tracks, which is comparable in size to some of the other parcels that are subjectively in question.
Mr. President, can I build on that answer just a little bit, if you don't mind? I'm gonna, maybe I'm picking it up from Chris a little bit here. Let's see. So if you look on the screen now, you can see, this is kind of the other piece of that puzzle, back to the potential to rezone or redevelop the properties. The, the properties that have the callouts there have all consented to the comp plan map change. The other three, we haven't received anything, but they haven't opposed it. So we have a vast majority of them that are interested to some degree to redevelop their, their properties with industrial uses.
Just to clarify on that, the far northern parcel came to the P&amp;Z hearing. We did discuss with him in person. He was like, well, okay, it seems like it's better because right now what I'm working on next to a train track doesn't make a lot of sense. So it seems like it's cleaning up stuff for me as well. He didn't have any opposition.
Any more questions for the applicant? Mr. Clerk, do we have anyone online? Or is there anyone here present in City Hall that would like to make public testimony?
Mr. President, nobody online.
Ralph, I'm going to give you a second option. Ralph says no. Okay. Speak now or forever hold your peace, Ralph. Okay, change the line. All right. Any last questions from the applicant? Oh, sorry.
I just want to double check if Kyle had something for Public Works. Hopefully Kyle's not waiting for me because I just sent him an email. FYI. Oh, my God, I'm so sorry. I've been trying to email you not to wait for me. This could go forever. Who knows? Hopefully not, but.
No?
No.
Okay. Would you like to come up and finish, Mr. Hatch?
I thank you again for your questions and concerns for this project. Meridian just went through a comprehensive plan a couple of years ago, and so we don't take these requests very lightly. During that, there was a lot of concern with growth, especially on housing. One thing that I felt was, you know, kind of sidelined a little bit was the, the evident need for industrial land in Meridian. At that time, we presented to council separate project, but similar incident happened to be kind of a, an overlap, looked at a parcels that looked good for us, for light industrial. In that case, you know, the thing you can do every 10, 20 years is request to council direct. In this case, going through the application process to make the same, I think this involves the immediate neighborhood quite a bit more. It's a more intimate process for the rezone. And I think it, in this case, helped encourage coordination with that local neighborhood to make sure this was an informed decision.
Awesome. Perfect.
Thank you. It's the pleasure of council.
President.
Mr. Cavanagh.
I don't have any other comments or questions concerned. So I move, we close the public hearing on the number 19, item H-2021-0026.
Second motion.
I have a motion and a second to close the public hearing for item number 19, H-2021-0026. Any discussion, any discussion? All those in favor for that signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Okay.
Mr. President.
Mr. Cavanagh.
I want to commend Mr. Hatch. Appreciate, nice seeing you. First off, appreciate you being here before us, and just commend you on your work and engaging the neighbors and kind of being proactive on that. I think that's probably one of the reasons why we had an empty chambers tonight. So unless there's any debate or discussion, I'm happy to move that we approve item number 18, Regency at River Valley, item number dash 2021 dash, oh, sorry, sorry, that's reading the wrong ones. Sorry, folks. Item 19, Hatch Industrial, H-2021-0026, as presented, including all staff and applicant testimony, including the request to reduce the landscape buffer to residential use from 25 feet to five feet as referenced in the applicant testimony.
I have a motion by Mr. Cavanagh. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, made by Ms. Perot. Any discussion on the motion?
Mr. President.
Ms. Perot.
I echo Councilman Cavanagh's statements. It, we do need that industrial, and our Economic Development Department has, has looked and searched long and hard for places for us to bring that into the community. So thank you for the work that you have put in to allow us to, to partner with us to do that. Really appreciate it.
Mr. President.
Mr. Hogan.
Real quick, just, yeah, this is an area in transition. We know which way it's going. It's going industrial. It's always great to put more industrial property into Meridian. And I want to thank Mr. Hatch. I really like the design of that look. You've got that building, the length going back and more glazing along Linder Road, which, which is an important corridor, and it's very nice looking. So appreciate that effort that you put into it.
I echo the sentiments of council as well. Thank you, Mr. Hatch, for your diligent work. Right. We have a motion and a second on the table. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any nay? Motion passes. Thank you. Last item of the evening, future meeting topics. No? Okay.
Mr. President.
Mr. Cavanagh.
Perhaps maybe just a conversation, either as a future meeting topic or conversation for you with the mayor, just outlining our policies and procedures about public comment portion of our meeting. I think, I think we all got a letter from a, the citizen who tried to testify tonight and was a little frustrated or confused about what that process is, just so it's transparent and consistent, so that those that are planning to come, if they're planning to be here right at the meeting, that there's a pathway for them to sign up in advance and maybe even a grace period, so that if they get here right at six, they have the opportunity to provide that feedback.
Point taken. Thank you. Anyone else?
Mr. President.
Mr. Hogan.
I move that we adjourn.
I have a motion and a second to adjourn. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passion. We're adjourned.